Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on the agenda is a presentation, Employee of the Month, and I'll turn that over to our City Manager, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As you recall, a month ago, our October Employee of the Month actually took a vacation day, which is rare. It happened to be on the day of the meeting, and because of the very, very tight timeframes with getting responses in and things, I did not have an opportunity to talk with him ahead of time, so he was hopefully having a good time somewhere other than City Hall that day. I notified him a few weeks ago that he had been the Employee of the Month, and he and I talked about the fact that if I knew him how I thought I knew him, the whole presentation in front of the City Council and everything isn't something that he was really all that interested in, but that he was grateful for having been recognized. He agreed with me on that, but apparently some others in his department felt that he still needed to have this ceremony. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could start down, I will read off some of the things that were mentioned about Mr. John Garcia. He helps coordinate our Adopt a Street and citywide community cleanup programs. His main job right now is going after violators for sanitation offenses, whether that's scavenging, illegal dumping in bins and enclosures, or more importantly, for the city financially, is he keeps an eye on addresses and businesses and homes that are currently not, they don't have an account, but they're actually taking service. Over the last year or so, less than a year, he's actually increased the number of residential accounts by over 450, new residential accounts that were actually obtaining service but were not actually being billed because they never signed up. They found a way around that, and that will add additional revenues to the city of over $250,000 for this year alone. Doing all of this, he's also monitoring for animal control violations and just anything else. He's truly looking out for every aspect of the city as he's out doing his job. One of the nominations, and there were a few, came with a series of letters of thank you attached regarding a particular hoarding case that started off as a residential refuse and sanitation issue, quickly became an animal issue that he participated with and assisted the family as their elder resident there eventually passed away, and he assisted with even that transition of finding homes for those animals as well. So, Mr. Garcia truly goes above and beyond. Whatever you ask him to do, he'll do it, and we have to be a little bit careful of that because he's just there for the city. So, John, thank you very much. Thank you, John. All right. I think one of those certificates is for John. I'm not sure which. The November Employee of the Month? Neither of them are, so. It's somewhere. It might be in my office, I don't know. But along with that, he'll also get the free detail contributed by Greiner, and also he's been making use of. In fact, I made sure to let him know just before December 1st that he could make use of the Employee of the Month parking space. So, I noticed he was ready and parked there immediately, so congratulations, John. Our November Employee of the Month, who will begin parking in your space January 1st, so you've got to be out of there, you've only got about two or three more days, is in the Engineering Division, Stefan Longoria, has worked all over in the Engineering and Public Works Division. I jokingly told Stefan today when I notified him that when there was, Public Works and Engineering were separate departments completely, there was a bit of a tug-of-war with Stefan in the middle, with Amor pulling him one way and Sean pulling him another. And through all that, he completed all the work that Amor asked him to do, he completed all the work that Sean asked him to do, always had a good attitude about it, and just simply came in and got the job done for the city and for the residents of the city. Some of the things that he worked on were switchgear installation at the sewer treatment plant, he designed, managed, and built Innovation Way out at the airport, saving the city valuable dollars through negotiating with contractors. He and his cohort, Carlos, Charlie, in Engineering are working on becoming more technologically savvy as a department, and so they're working with actually iPads. I was a little bit skeptical at first, but the iPads actually give them the ability to interact more live-time with the contractors and make the job run more smoothly, and as a result, come in with significant savings as well as less claims. Stefan also has worked on a number of projects relating to utilities, including the solar, the attempt at selling land for a solar development, and also coordinating that with the potential sale of the Victorville II project, all in the same land. So, he's been extremely varied in his responsibilities, but the one thing that hasn't varied is his commitment to making sure that the jobs get done well. So, Stefan, thank you very much. Apparently no speeches tonight, so thank you, gentlemen.
All right, this time we'll go into public comment. Is there any public comment before we go into closed session? All right, seeing none, we'll have the declaration of closed session by our City Attorney.
Thank you, Ma'am McCracken. There is only, we only are in need of one closed session tonight. It's item number four, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9 subdivision C. The other items, two, three, and five, there's no need to discuss those at this time. So, we're going in on item number four, and to the extent there is reportable action, we will report that at either the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
All right, we'll now recess to closed session.
They've always kind of sat there.
Good evening, I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We did have a closed session, and I will have our City Attorney announce any items out of closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McCracken. We had closed session only on Agenda Item Number Four. We did not need it on Items Two, Three, and Five. Item Four was anticipated litigation pursuant subdivision C of Section 5495-6.9 of the Government Code. There is no reportable action with respect to that item at this time.
All right, we'll now move into the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Gary Ratliff, Mesa Linda Ward Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and our Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Captain Don Yoder. If you all please stand.
Our dear heavenly Father, we humbly bow our head before thee to give thee, and to give thanks to thee for our many blessings. We thank you for this Christmas season to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank thee for our city and this great nation that we live in. We are also grateful for our city leaders. We ask thee to please bless them and their families. We ask thee to please bless our military servicemen and women. Father in heaven, we ask that thou would bless this meeting with thy spirit. May we make right decisions that are inspired by thee for the good of our community, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. We always have the pleasure of being able to present the military banners that we hang throughout our city as our soldiers are off and fighting for our freedom, and tonight we'd like to recognize military banners to get Jose Caseros, United States Navy. I believe we have his parents here, or his family.
Thank you for coming. I didn't, this is a surprise for me. My wife, she's like, "Let's go to this meeting with the City Hall," and I was like, "Okay." And on experiences, it's when you treasure the way that you walk in a flat ground, being in Iraq and all that, it's, you're just glad when you come home, you know, in the U.S. just to be here and be with your family. And, you know, and I thank you guys for coming, and I'll say thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could have Dana Armstrong come up, we're going to do the presentation for the winners of the Recycles Week contest. Been waiting on this for a few weeks, months? I don't know how long it's been, but I'm looking forward to doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Some of you may recall, we were here in early November, and the Mayor and the Council proclaimed the first week in November to be Victorville Recycles Week, and as part of that, we had a big celebration and competition in our local schools. And so, tonight, we're here to recognize the winners of Victorville Recycles Week. And the great thing about Victorville Recycles Week is that there are a lot of winners, but we'll try to be prompt and we'll try to be quick with this in recognizing everyone. As, just a little bit of an overview, as part of Victorville Recycles Week, we had a number of different competitions. There was a poster and a sculpture competition. You may have noticed some of the posters out in the lobby. We also had a newspaper and a bottle-and-can recycling contest for schools to see who could recycle the most. And then we also had the main competition, which was to have the various schools participate in assorted activities and earn points, and the schools with the most points won prizes, and prizes ranging from $200 up to $1,000. The prizes were donated by Bertec Waste Industries. I'd like to acknowledge Stephen. Stephen Bradshaw, the Division Manager with our local hauling division, Victorville Disposal, and Sharon Mitchell is our Recycling Coordinator for Bertec Waste Industries. Thank you very much. And there were other prizes that were sponsored through the city, but it really was through the Department of Conservation grant money to promote beverage container recycling, so there was some additional funding through that source. So, with that, what we would like to do is first, we're going to lead up to the grand, grand, grand prize winner, which is the school that got the most points, and they're going to get the trophy and a check for $1,000. And their name is already on the trophy, and Sharon and I have been guarding it very carefully, keeping the name up against the wall, so it's a secret. They don't even know that they've won it yet. But we're going to start by recognizing some runners-up, and I would like to ask the following students to come forward, and we're going to give you a certificate and a check. And these are the runners-up for the poster contest and our sculpture contest, so I would like to invite Gabby Rosales, a runner-up for our poster contest. If she's here, great. And also, next, I would like to, and why don't you just stay up here, and we'll just have everybody up here for a moment, and also I'd like to invite, is it Zosir Gonzalez? I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Come on up, you're a runner-up for our poster contest. Next, I'd like to invite up Nadeline Romero. She's a runner-up for our sculpture contest. And then we'd also like to invite Jaclyn Ebling to come up. She's also one of our runners-up for the sculpture contest. Congratulations, ladies, for your, and thank you very much for entering the contest. We really enjoyed judging the posters, and yours were great. We received over 1,000 posters, so it was very hard to pick a winner, and you were, between the sculptures and the posters, you were the runners-up, so thank you very much. And now, I would like to recognize the grand prize winners of the poster and the sculpture contest. Like I said, we had over 1,000, we had 1,009 posters, and we had, was it 80 or 96? 85 sculptures. And the grand prize winner of the poster contest is Leanne Calvillo, or Calvio, a fourth grader from West Creek Elementary. And we're going to get a photo of you with the mayor. That's great. Great, thank you. And then I'd like to invite the grand prize winner of our sculpture contest. It's actually a group of students, it's Ms. Ann and Ms. Tisha's first through third-grade class from Mountain View Montessori, so all of you who were involved in that, please come on up, okay? And you may have seen these, the sculpture out in the lobby, it's a model of our Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility, and it, I think the title of it was "The Best Place for Earth Recycle at the Murph." It was really, it was really great, so we really enjoyed it. Again, it was very difficult to judge all the sculptures. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Next, we would like to recognize the winners of the newspaper and bottle-and-can recycling contests, and if the representatives from these schools would come forward. The winner of our bottle-and-can recycling competition was Morgan Kincaid Preparatory School, and the winner of our newspaper recycling contest was Cobalt Middle School. So, if representatives from those two schools could come up. Like I said, everybody's a winner when you recycle. That's the takeaway message tonight. Sure, yeah, group photo would be great. Thank you very much. And then the next group that we would like, well, there's three, three schools that are runners-up, we're really on the home stretch here, we are. Three schools that are runners-up, we had different categories, 0 to 500 students, 500 to 1,000 students, and 1,000 students and above. And the runner-up for the up to 500 students was West Creek Elementary School, so if a representative from that school could come up. And then the runner-up from, for 500 to 1,000 students was West Palms Conservatory, and all of these schools won $200. And for the category of 1,000 students and above, the runner-up school was Mesa Linda Middle School. Yay, Mesa Linda. All right. You came as a group, recycling as a group effort. Which, okay, yeah, go. Yeah, okay, that's great. Congratulations, and thank you very much. All right. And then we have two runners-up, and then we're at the grand prize, okay? The third place school for the most points was Morgan Kincaid School, if someone from Morgan Kincaid could come up, and they won a $250 prize. And the second place runner-up for most points was Cobalt Middle School, so they won a $500 prize. And I have to say Cobalt Middle School is a perpetual leader in this competition. They always do a great job, and last year, they were the grand points winner, so their name is on the trophy. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to the end here, the grand prize winner, and here is our trophy. You get $1,000, and you get bragging rights, and you get the coveted Victorville Recycles Week perpetual trophy that was manufactured by Bertec's shop. The guys with the welding torches made this. It's a lot of fun. So, I, this, this school is the little school that can. They're a small school, but they've done a great job. They always do such a great job, and this was their year. So, the grand points winner this year goes to Mountain View Montessori Charter School. Congratulations. Yeah, this one's heavy, though, yes. It weighs a ton. All right. Congratulations, good job. I really am, thank you so much. I really am almost done. I just want to summarize. We, I want to thank all the schools, the students, the teachers, the parents, administrators for their participation. This is the fifth year we've done it. Sharon put together some statistics. We figure, we had 10 schools this year participating, we had over 7,500 students at those schools, and over the five years that we've been doing this competition, I estimate we've, we've had close to 40,000 students participate in some activity. So, it's a really great activity, and hopefully the message of recycling is spreading throughout the schools, back to the homes. I want to thank Bertec Waste Industries again, and the Department of Conservation for their sponsorship of the event. I also want to acknowledge Roe Ratliff in the back there. It was her idea originally five years ago to come up with Victorville Recycles Week. She got it started and running, and then the last few years, Bertec has taken the ball, and I want to acknowledge Sharon Mitchell has done an outstanding job continuing the program, and without her, none of this would have happened. So, thank you very much, thank you for recycling. Good evening.
Well, again, congratulations to all the winners from all of us up here. I'm sure everyone shares the same sentiment, and all did a great job, so thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get into the agenda, and I'll have the presentation of the agenda by our City Clerk.
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cellphones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the City Clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The Mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the City Clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There is one revision that has been submitted for tonight's agenda and that is a request by the mayor to continue item number nineteen to the January seventeenth city council meeting. And also, in conjunction with that item, a letter from the county administrative office has been provided to the council and is on the dais for your review. Those are all the revisions I have. Mayor McEckern.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into public comment. Uh, I do have two cards. Al Cotilla.
I'm here to speak about the dogs all running around losing Victorville. I spent four thousand dollars of my own money. I rescued twenty-five dogs and I got them all homes. And I had to pay for them when they were sick. I got them all their shots. I spayed and neutered every one of them. And it cost me about four thousand bucks. The city should be doing this. The city don't give a damn about animals and I, I can't understand why. Uh, that Zuni place out there, I rescued a dog, uh, that, for two years it took me to rescue this dog under a mobile home. He had five puppies, she had five puppies. She brought them all through in the cold of winter under that mobile home. I used to go and put food under there every day for her. And, uh, she had the puppies and I waited till they were old enough and I caught every puppy, got them all homes. I had to pay for everything first. The dog got pregnant again, this time she was under a different mobile home. Took me two years and I finally caught that dog. This time, she had eleven puppies in my bathroom. After that, the puppies were big enough to give away. I work with Pets Forever Found. They keep dogs forever if they have to. They don't kill them like they do at that slaughterhouse in, uh, in, uh, Apple Valley. So, I called, I got sick and I called them up and I said, "Can you please take care of this dog for me for two days? I'm sick and I can't take care of her." And I said, "She just got through having eleven puppies." And they said, "Oh, sure, we'll take good care of her just for a couple of days." So, I gave them the medicine and everything. I went home, I called back, fifteen minutes later, they put the dog to sleep. That's the kind of scumbags that you people work with in this, in the animal control here. Now, I volunteered on weekends. There was people selling dogs in all the Walmarts, all the places around. I volunteered to do it for free. Evidently, I'm not responsible enough and I'm not mad at the person who turned me down. But I was a road manager for a rock group for twelve years. I was responsible for millions of dollars I had to collect on the road. The manager gave me a, a piece of paper with thirty or forty dates on it. I had to put the whole tour together. I had to collect the money. I had to make the TV dates. I had to make the radio interviews. I had to do all of that for twelve years. Then I became a stunt man in the motion picture business. I was responsible for budgets, hundreds of thousand-dollar budgets. They give me a, a script and I'd give them a budget. I was responsible. If I gave them a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, I never went over budget once. I could teach a lot of politicians how to do that, but I never, ever went over budget once. I think that makes me responsible enough to go tell people they can't sell dogs out in the street. It's illegal. I had to call the cops. I don't know if the cops go there. You know, they ain't got time to do that. Plus, whoever goes out there never gives them a ticket. They need tickets. If they don't get tickets, they go from one place to another. Those people don't spay the dogs, they don't neuter them, they don't get them shots, they don't get them nothing. I guarantee you seventy-five percent of them dogs are out in the street again. And building that stupid Walmart over by the college is the biggest mistake you're ever gonna make. And whoever votes for it, I guarantee you, won't get re-elected. Help them, will ya?
Good evening, council and mayor. This pertains to the article in the Daily Press, December tenth, announcing that the, um, the Highway sixty-six museum has been selected in Victorville to hold the festival, the Highway sixty-six festival. This will be the, I think it's the second week of August next year. And this pertains to that. I've, I've been talking to a number of the, and I know a number of these people. Uh, I'm going to give you a list. Set Free Thrift Store, Carmen's Bakery, Precision Prosthetics. These are all stores that are earning income in Old Town. Don Fressy's Real Estate. Uh, these are all supporting, uh, this agenda that I'm going to put up. Catholic Gift and Books Boxing Coaches and Fitness, Caesar's Jewelry, New Beginning Christian Center, Best Deal Furniture, Princess Party Supplies, Leo's Discount Grocery, Cheek Boutique and the Photography Store, Santa Fe Trading Post, the Barber College on Eighth, Eighth Street, and the P's and Q's Antiques. These are all concerned citizens' businesses of this area who are aware of what's going to happen next year. Um, what the council, what, what these people want the council to recognize is a committee with members of Old Town and local businesses who would advise council what needs to be done to attract businesses to Old Town. The members of the committee would show how to advance Old Town with long-term progress instead of short-term progress and with minimal expense. In the past improvement committees set up by this council were not, these, the people were not involved in Old Town business. They weren't Old Town business people. I don't know who they were, but that, they, I didn't come at that time. But the result was, the council imposed more regulations and code enforcement on Old Town owners, which backfired. Those bad feelings resulted and business people moved out in response. In fact, one of the large antique stores that was in Old Town moved to Hisperia. Uh, regarding safety, now, this is, I complained about this the last, uh, regarding safety. Last week, I was standing on Sixth and C, or Seventh, it was Seventh and A, I wrote it on. Uh, there was a two-car accident and it was a big crash, a big thud, and I walked over and talked to the sheriff. The sheriff on the scene stated, "These accidents happen," and I'm quoting her, "all the time." The speed limit is twenty-five for the school on Forest Street and, um, I'm wondering why they don't just continue the twenty-five speed limit, uh, down to D because then they say it's thirty-five and so, if everybody speeds up to fifty or sixty or seventy, by the time they get to, uh, D Street. And there are four crosswalks and believe me, I've seen it. Most drivers ignore, even if there's pedestrians there, they aren't aware of the crosswalks. And that is a definite safety problem in, uh, Old Town. So, anyway, just to let you know, these, these people, I've taught, spoken with all of them and they are all very, um, ready for what does the council would do, but they want a committee. They, they want to form a committee. And I can name names if you, if you need that. But, um, just to let you know what's happening in Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I have no other cards under just general public comment. So, we'll move into our agenda items. Library Board of Trustees, there were no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, no items at the time of posting. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda item number eight. This is a request to approve a sublease with Southern California Aviation LLC, SCA, for Building six ninety-one.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias, may I get a vote from you?
I don't have a screen to vote.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Agenda item number nine is a request to approve the execution of the standard sublease agreement for Building six eighty-five A and B, buy-in between SCLA-A and the Boeing
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Mr. Mayor, just for the public's knowledge, her voting screen isn't working IT. I can tell they're working on it right now, so she'll need to voice vote until they get it repaired.
Agenda item number ten, request to approve the execution of the standard sublease agreement for Building six eighty-five C, buy-in between SCLA-A and Boeing Company.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Agenda item number eleven is a request to approve the execution of the standard sublease agreement for Buildings eight, seven, nine, buy-in between SCLA-A and the Boeing Company.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Mr. Mayor, looks like the voting has been repaired on Councilmember Vias' computer.
All right. Under the redevelopment agency, we have the consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number thirteen, this is a request to approve a settlement agreement buy-in between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Bazoff Development Three LLC relative to, to the disposition and development agreement, Auto Mall Project.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Agenda item number fourteen, under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, this is a request to approve and execute the remarketing agreement with Barclay's Capital to serve as exclusive variable rate remarketing agent and terminate the agreement with Gates Capital.
Mr. Mayor, this item has to do with the Foxborough Bonds. Uh, and essentially, these bonds are remarketed on a weekly basis. Uh, we met with Barclay's a short time ago and it appears that their marketing efforts have served the city better than our current remarketing agent. Uh, Peter Bufo is here with a very brief presentation for the council to consider. Uh, admittedly, this, because of the, um, the potential savings in the range of about a hundred thousand dollars a month, we rushed this agreement and, uh, the city attorney has pointed out that, uh, there are a couple of minor changes that need to be made. They are non-substantive in nature. Uh, so, if the council should choose to, uh, direct staff to move forward with this item, there's a little bit of cleanup that needs to take place and we would request that, uh, any motion that is made include that, uh, that ability. So, uh, with that, I'd ask Mr. Bufo to come down and, and give his presentation.
Robertson, Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Peter Bufo with Barclay's Capital. I have a very brief presentation for you, but first, we're introduced two of my colleagues who are with me, Salvador Torres and John McCray Goldsmith. Um, I'm in the Los Angeles office of Barclay's Capital. They are in the San Francisco office. Uh, they actually, um, are the most expert in our firm in the inland empire and have worked extensively with your county, San Bernardino County, RCTC, and a number of regional agencies here. Um, if I could very quickly go through this presentation with you, assuming I can solve the technology, um, just in terms of some very basic definitions and you're, I'm sure, very aware of this, you are an issuer. When you issue bonds during the primary market, uh, at that point, especially with variable rate bonds, uh, those bonds are traded quite often. All of that occurs in the secondary market and you're represented by a remarketing agent in that secondary market. Your variable rate demand bonds, um, have an interest reset weekly, so they're bought and sold quite frequently as those interest rates are reset. That interest rate determines how profitable that bond issue is going for you and for the investors. The next page is really probably the most important page in this presentation. And what you're looking at here is this. We serve as remarketing agent for New York MTA, um, and with a letter of credit from BNP Paribas. Your letter of credit is also with BNP Paribas. The reason that's important is that that's the bank that guarantees, in the case of the New York MTA bonds and in the case of your bonds, they guarantee those bonds. So, investors are really just looking at that letter of credit. It's based on that and the reliability of that bank that they're interested in those bonds. Your remarketing agent then basically, uh, has to set interest rates that walk a tightrope. Investors are looking for the highest interest rate. You're trying to get the lowest interest rate, um, as that weekly reset happens. Um, as you can see, going back to July twenty-ten, that's the performance of our services as remarketing agents, uh, on those New York MTA bonds. That reference to CIFMA, CIFMA is a National Securities Industry Association that provides an index, a benchmark that says, "Here's about what is an acceptable interest rate on, on this type of security." And as you can see, for New York MTA, we stayed very close to the CIFMA index and we have every indication that we will continue to do that until your letter of credit expires in May. The orange line is your current remarketing agent, um, and those are not very good numbers. You're currently at two-point-eight percent. Uh, you've been, uh, over three percent and as you can say, you see, going all the way back to June twenty-ten, uh, interest rates really have been at something closer to point-two percent, point-two-two. So, you don't want to be at those very high numbers. Um, lastly, um, to give you an idea of why that is, uh, there are, uh, obviously no guarantees in any of this, but we want you to know why we have a reputation for doing very well as a remarketing agent and can demonstrate that with our past performance. We're the largest debt underwriter by volume in the world. Uh, we have, uh, a great deal of experience in this area, especially with VRDBs. Um, we're really the re, uh, leading remarketing agent in that area with that type of securities. We have a very large capital base. We, we have a portfolio of our own holdings that is very large. So, when necessary, to give you the interest rates you need on your bonds, we will acquire those bonds in that period ourselves. Um, on the left, you can see that our portfolio exceeds nineteen billion dollars. You can see what the, the distribution is in the country. And in that bottom right chart, you can see that any one time, looking for instance at, um, in the week of August eighth, uh, we were holding almost a billion dollars in our own portfolio of bonds that we had also bought and sold. So, um, that's it. That's the end of my presentation and we and my colleagues are very glad to answer any questions you might have, Mr. Mayor and council members.
How do you account for that, that high interest rate from Gates?
It is, um, this is a non-technical term, but it is a mystery. It's a mystery to us and I suspect not too much less mysterious to your staff.
Is there something about our bonds that weren't that kind of high rate that you wouldn't be able to perform at?
Not that we can see because, um, council member, again, um, the kind of comparable factor here is that letter of credit from BNP Paribas. That's what investors are watching. So, why at any one time, um, number one, your interest rates would have shot up to those levels. And, and they're also flat for a relatively long period of time and none of it corresponds to either, you know, tremendous, um, changes in interest rates or, uh, downgrades by, by rating agencies of, of anyone in the area. of anyone in the area. So as I say, it's just a mystery why the rates got to that point. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to present.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Your motion does include the ability to make non-substantive changes.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Under the Victorville Water District, there were no items at time of posting. Moving on to the City Council. We have a public hearing. Hearing called to hear arguments for and against an amendment to approve a contract between the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement System, and the City Council, rescinding ordinance number 2279 and introducing ordinance number 2287. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda item number 15. Anyone wishing to address the Council on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the Council. I'll have the city clerk read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Victorville and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2287 with a second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
General, item number 16 is the Consent Calendar.
I'd like to pull A.
All right, we will pull agenda item number 16A from the Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
All right, we'll go ahead and handle 16A.
I have a question. It says here Keith Metzler is receiving $1,500. What was that for?
I'm not familiar with that exact warrant. I don't know if Mr. Metzler has information on that.
Yeah, that item looks like expenses reimbursed. I had some travel occurring in the month of, I believe, November, maybe October, not sure of the exact date, but I did have some travel on official business to the East Coast. I did attend meetings with a foreign airport to pursue cargo operations connecting to SCLA, so I would believe that's largely attributed to that.
And then I also wanted to mention to the public that there's another check to the city attorney for $6,500.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 17 is a request to adopt resolution number 11-056 entitled, "Resolution of the City of Victorville hereby authorizing the Director of Development to submit an application for a Cal Recycle Waste Tire Enforcement Grant and Execute All Grant Related Operations."
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Agenda item number 18 is a request to, one, reaffirm the authorization to execute the purchase agreement and ask for documents for NSP Acquisition of Real Property, APN Two, approve an appropriation from the fiscal year 2001, 2012 Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Three, funds in the amount of $100,000 for the purchase and other associated costs to acquire the property. And three, designate the Assistant City Manager as the authorized owner of all related transaction
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Okay, on agenda item number 19, that will be continued to January 17th. But just to be clear, the reason I've requested that is that there was no backup documentation, the letter from the mayor of Santa Clarita, or the bill, or the differences between what's been approved prior to what's being requested now. So in order for the Council to make sure that we have all that information, I requested that to be continued to January 17th. We'll move on to agenda item number 20. Councilmember Committee Reports, and Councilmember Kennedy?
No, don't have any.
Councilmember Vias?
Yes, we had our first meeting at Victorville Transit Authority, which is the busing system. We had our first meeting at the new facility, and also Sandbag is assisting with the purchases of new buses for the High Desert. That's it.
We just had our Mountain Desert Committee meeting for Sandbag, and we're looking at the 10-year plan implementation. And there's several projects on that list. A lot of them, we want to make sure we get done. The question really that's out there for this Council, for all councils, is whether or not redevelopment survives, because that's pretty much how we are financing these projects today. So stay tuned for that, because much of what will come out of that will depend upon whether or not the Supreme Court of California keeps redevelopment agencies in place or does away with them. So that was one item that was discussed. We continue to discuss the High Desert Corridor, and hopefully, I'll have some more information for you on that in the near future. All right, we'll go ahead and move into Council Reports. Discussion, possible action regarding items for the upcoming City Council agendas. Councilmember Vias?
Yes, I'd like to agendize some discussion on forming a committee for Old Town local businesses to advise the Council on issues of safety, parking, business needs. As stated in public comments, there have been a lot of complaints with the local business owners about downtown area, and they don't feel that they have a voice or anyone paying attention to them. And I think that we could maybe discuss that, of possibly forming a committee for them down there, from local business owners.
Isn't there currently an Old Town Property Owners Association?
By May. There was an Old Town Property Owners Association there, and they met monthly, but when the economy, you know, we had this financial crisis, they stopped meeting. I was the liaison to the group, and they stopped meeting. We had worked with Keith Metzler's office, and we were going to revitalize the Old Town, and we have a specific plan for that. I would say that if there is an interest from property owners or business owners in Old Town, that perhaps, as Ms. Vias indicated, we should look at forming a re-fiving that committee as such, or re-establishing a new committee, perhaps, as business owners, business owners have a different outlook on what they want for Old Town as opposed to property owners. So I think maybe Steph can, we can continue working on that.
I think that, they did mention that to me, but I think the issue was that they felt that they were not local business owners, and that was the problem, and they didn't feel represented. So they want to form with the local business owners, and that's what I would request that we agendize. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm completely fine with that. I think it's a good idea.
Also, I would like to agendize a proposal. I understand from, oh, she's gone. Roe said that she was done with the proposal. If we could agendize that for the Victorville Transit Authority, the advertising for the bus stops, they were going to present something to us.
I think that report is in its final stages and should be on the January 17th Council Meeting Agenda.
Oh, okay, perfect. And then also, if we could have an update for the senior citizens, I didn't get a, I'd like to know what would happen with that.
I don't know if you wanted that for a future meeting, but I did go to the Senior Citizens Center, as well as Mr. Rothschild, and took a quick tour. They have essentially had one contractor take a look at their facility, who estimated their needs to be well in excess of $100,000. We recommended that they focus on the most critical areas of need, which in their case, we believe to be the roof, because the roof is causing some of the other needs and some of the other problems. So Mr. Metzler, Mr. Metzler's office also sent them the forms, as well as instructions and an invitation to the, find out more about the CDVG process, which starts up in January, so that they can apply for a grant. Obviously, we couldn't speak for the full Council, but he and I both indicated to them that their best, their best, most potentially successful grant opportunity would not be something where they ask for the full dollar amount to be funded through CDVG, but instead have other funding available that the city could participate in and be a contributor of it, but not take on something that large. That's what's been successful in the past. So I think that they've got the information that they need in order to assist with their facility. I gave them some other tips, but that's not all that material at this point.
I don't either. So reports from Councilmembers and staff? Anything from Mr. Robertson?
No reports. Just want to wish you all Merry Christmas, happy holidays to the public. There's a little bit of confusion at this time of year, because the City Hall does close down between Christmas and New Year's. A lot of people think that we give our staff four free days off. It's actually two regular holidays each year, and then typically two furlough days that have been in place since the last recession in the mid-'90s. The employees voted, rather than taking a pay raise at that time, to have two furlough days instead. So their pay is ever so slightly less throughout the year because of that.
I know nothing. Oh, Merry Christmas.
I would just like to echo our city managers', you know, happy holidays to everyone, and we can get, let our employees know that we do wish them the best and Happy New Year.
All right, and same for me. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we will be back in 2012. I hope you all enjoy the holiday season. Thank you. We are adjourned.